All right. So, Madam Vice Chair, I have the discretion along with your board to decide who's going to run this meeting, so whenever you all are ready.
All right, and we've got a forum, right?
Yes, we do.
Great, so I call the meeting to order.
Okay.
Do we have the agenda handy?
Yes, we do.
The first order of business, as usual, is the...
I did want to just take a moment if I may.
Sure.
We generally focus on what we can control in this world because there's always something terrible going on outside, but just today, a school community very similar to ours suffered a big tragedy in Texas with 14 students and one teacher killed. I know Roberto has a personal connection to the area, and we certainly all have a human connection, so just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that and hope we can all do whatever we can to keep that from being so common in our world. That being said, we do have an agenda for tonight. It's an important meeting, and it's here on your screen. So, the meeting was called to order at 6:03. Can you see this up there?
Yes.
Okay, take it away, Mahal.
The first order of business would be approval of the agenda. Anybody like to move?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approved. The next food chain business would be approval of April minutes.
All right, does anybody need a little time to review those? I think they were emailed. Charles emailed them earlier.
I don't think I got them.
I approved them in.
Would you like to move to approve?
Yes.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye. I'm just going to abstain having not read them, but not for any other reason.
They were accurate, to the best of my recollection. And now we're moving on to new business, executive director's updates.
Thank you. Right on cue, just got a cough. Everyone here is negative for COVID.
She's wearing a mask.
I'm eating.
You're still negative.
We have had little sniffles and colds going around the building, and even I started to feel a little something today. So, I'm also negative, but I figured I'd wear this in case you overheard me sniffling. COVID has been up, as everybody knows, in New York. Case rates have increased, and, you know, we have felt that here at the school. We've had some staff absences. We're continuing to follow our protocol. Staff are out five days, and fortunately, we do have the personnel and the team spirit to cover when that happens. But, you know, it's that time of year, and it's the state of our city right now. So, I'm not proposing any changes to the protocols that we have, but families continue to make their own decisions about masks, and hopefully, this is something that will fade again. But I keep showing this graph, and I figured I should show it whether the news is good or bad, so this is where we are. I'm going to kind of keep going through here, but please interrupt me with questions about any topic. Enrollment for next year is, as I mentioned in our written updates, looking strong. We are not fully enrolled yet. In particular, we have a few seats in kindergarten for next year, which we're working to fill. Applications come in, but we, you know, they need to get accepted if a seat offer goes out, and so our front desk team has been working with a lot of different families to make that happen. Right now, we're 98.3% enrolled for next year, and, you know, that is where we intend to stay or go up from there. We'll talk about that a little bit more when we talk about the annual budget proposal. Hello, Mr. Estrada.
David, thank you for joining us.
Last week, some of you on the board had a chance to participate in the midterm visit from our authorizer at the New York State Education Department. I want to very briefly give an overview of what we did with them, but then I'd like to ask our instructional leaders to talk us through what they saw and kind of what we discussed with our visitors. The headline is this very, very positive visit. We were really pleased and proud with how it went. But Thursday, they, our two visitors, our liaison and a consultant who has a background as a dual-language teacher, were in the building. They had focus group interviews with our leaders, with the board officers, with a group of teachers, and with a group of special populations. And then Friday, they came back and observed, I would guess, 15 or 16 classrooms, and typical visit was about 20 minutes. So, we had a chance to debrief with them just a bit, and then we'll be awaiting their report in a few months. But Joanna, how did it go? What did they see? What do you take away from that?
Definitely, I think that it was a great visit. I think that one of the highlights was that we were very transparent in where we are as a school, what have we done, and where are we going, so very transparent in the areas of growth. So, there wasn't really any surprises. I think that Thursday, in the focus group, we started with the leadership team, and there was a series of questions, and like I said, we were very honest and direct. Teachers were really super excited after their focus group and came out. It's like, wow, you know, I have to share all the great things that are happening in the school, so it was a great day one, and then day two, it was just confirmation of all the data that they collected on Thursday. So, if we said this is what's going well, they got to see that live in classrooms, and if we, you know, when we mentioned the areas of growth, they were able to also see that. And then I went with Adam, which is the consultant prior bilingual educator, and Graciela and Michael were with Paula, and, you know, we, before we entered into every class, we told them, like, this is the profile of the teacher. This is how long they've been with us. This is what we're working on with this specific teacher, and this is what you're going to see. And sometimes teachers have, you know, days, right? And I was like, yeah, I hope what they're going to see is what they see, what I see every day in this classroom, and it was great for us to walk in, and when I said, you're going to see, you know, instructional practices in action, that's what we saw. You're going to see that she's probably not going to track every progress of every student because that's what she's working on, and that's what they observe. So, at the end, it was really cool to hear Adam stamp that again and say, you know, there's a lot of work that has been done, and your transparency means a lot, you know, because that's what we look for. We look for instructional coaches that know what they're doing, know what they're looking for, but that they're honest about the areas that they're working on in the school.
The other thing that really stuck out to me and to the visitors was just the presence of our instructional deans. You know, I don't know if this is obvious to everyone, even on the board, but our deans, AKA coaches, they're in classrooms 70% of the time. They're not sitting off in an office, right? They're in and out of classrooms, and part of what they do is live coaching, which is a nice word for going and holding up a whiteboard in the back of the classroom with a tip for the teacher on it, or whispering in the teacher's ear. So, if you didn't know better, you'd think that we were just preparing for, you know, the visitor, but actually, that's what goes on all the time, and so it was really neat to see how that was working.
Definitely.
So, anyway, we shared in the pre-reads the self-assessment that was provided before the visit, the same themes that we've been talking about all year round. We're working to increase the level of rigor. We want our students doing the heavy lifting when it comes to their cognitive engagement. They need to be thinking as hard as they can all throughout the lessons, and in some classrooms, we've got a little ways to go on that. On the other hand, there's a whole lot of cariño. There's a very positive culture. There's a lot of data being collected and acted upon, and the basic structures that are driving improvement are in place in every grade level. So, if anybody has questions about those, we've been talking them through with the academic committee, but I'd encourage you to read it if you haven't had a chance, and I want to thank all the board officers that took time during a weekday to sit in on that call with our authorizers.
Yeah, I would just say, we had a chance to talk with the authorizers. Charles was on the call. Emily and I were on the call, and I had Mahal.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. And, look, I took away a very positive attitude from them, from the call, and they were, you know, they had a lot of nice things to say. They asked us a lot of also very targeted questions, but again, not things about in the classroom, things that, you know, we would be spending more time on, and they seem to be very thorough, but also very positive, which, you know, I took away as a good thing, and we tried to show them a lot of that community engagement and real student engagement that we've all been focusing on. So, I thought, from the little window that we had, it was a positive visit, so I'm glad. I'm glad to hear.
Thank you. All right. I know we're going to talk about the budget tonight, so I'm trying to keep these pretty succinct. We are in the middle of some spring activities, end-of-year activities. Would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, definitely. We are working, Loreto, our dance teacher, oh my goodness, all the specialty team is amazing for Loreto, and, you know, just to highlight that the authorizers were impressed with her, like, she was just doing her thing in the classroom.
Our dance teacher, yeah.
Our dance teacher, and so we're working on our spring concert. Kids are loving the preparation. We have dress rehearsals two days prior to our concert, but yeah, it's just like it's all hands on deck. Even teachers, we, last week on Wednesday, we took 30 minutes from our PD time, and all the teachers contributed, and we did trees, and we did hearts, and they decorated the scenography for the spring concert. So, it's like a whole school community thing that everybody gets pumped up about. We have our step-up ceremony for our kindergarten kids and the kindergarten team. I selected two of our founding teachers that will be returning with us next year again. They have been the K step-up ceremony coordinators, so they're like, oh, I'm taking a leader role. So, they're super excited about that. So, we're using the same venue that we used for the winter concert, but we also want to be strategic on how we use our funds. So, we are going to do the step-up ceremony in the morning on Thursday the night, and then in the afternoon, we'll have our spring concert. So, those are two big events. We just had, I don't think the spelling bee happy after our last board meeting, right?
Spelling bee.
We had our spelling bee. You want to talk about the spelling bee because you were the MC on that?
We launched a school-wide spelling bee that originated in each of the individual classrooms, where each classroom competed, individual students competed against one another until there were two finalists from each classroom. Then we had a major assembly per grade level where we then conducted the spelling bee, and it was amazing. The kids had a fabulous time. They were able to demonstrate their ability to sit and participate as audience members as well as be active participants in an actual contest. They each received awards. It was just a great time all around. Teachers enjoyed it, children enjoyed it, and it was really exciting, thus launching us into our preparation for a math tournament that we have upcoming next week. So, the deans have been actively preparing for that and putting all the logistics together, and we launch that tomorrow with teachers, so looking forward to that as well.
And I just love those events because they're about celebrating the joy of knowledge, you know? You don't have to be getting ready for a test to celebrate, you know, all the skills and knowledge we're acquiring around here, so appreciate our team putting those together.
Not to mention, we just had career week last week.
That's right, and a number of parents visited the school to talk about their careers, but also children talked about their own ambitions. We have a wide variety of futures in our school. We have some police spaceship veterinarians, I think, and we love that. And then we also took the opportunity to talk to parents about the college savings program, because for many kids, but not all, you know, that will be a step towards those careers, so, yeah, it's that time of year when so many things are going on, I forget about some of them.
By the time they're old enough, I feel like police spaceship veterinarian may be a job.
That may be a job.
It's a real chance.
You're a spice of school.
And then finally, we, I think you all saw the email notification, but we're very grateful to be part of the summer boost and my C grant program. Our school's benefiting to the tune of more than $170,000 to support our summer school effort, and our summer school will be free to all participating students. We also have a subsidized day camp program, as we did last year, and we circulated the most recent details on that through Parents' Square last week. So, if you're listening to this and you have questions about that, please do reach out to us and call the school, but we're excited to have fully operational summer school, drawing in, actually, just one connection I'll mention, drawing in resources from the Lavinia Group, English literacy experts, who we also, coincidentally, are engaging to help us throughout the year. So, some of our teachers who are teaching in the summertime will get an extra dose of that same approach in English as we're going to be using during the school year. So, yeah, good stuff happening. Shall we turn to new business?
Yes, let's turn to new business, please.
All right. So, we talked last month about our plan to be putting, making use of our neighboring building, which is currently used by Brooklyn Rise Charter School at 5224 Fifth Avenue. I know we had had a few concerns getting all the paperwork landed for that, but all the lease is in place, all landlord sign-offs are in hand, and the Friends of Leap Academy organization, and we agreed on a sub-sublease agreement by which, just as we do for this building, we could lease out the space that is held in their name. It's a sub-sublease because the 5224 building is already subleased, so there's an owner, a sub-owner leasing to Friends, who's then leasing to us. There may be not even quite enough subs in that title, but I did circulate the draft, and so just if, after any discussion, just love to know if we could vote to authorize the school to sign that agreement.
Does anybody have questions about the sub-sublease?
Did you get any comment, discussion with the building about signage and permits for signage and commercial signs?
We have been working on a plan for signage, and Roberto's taken the lead on that. I'm not aware of the need for any new permits, but there's no expert bigger than you in our world, so maybe we could chat about that offline.
Happy to.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Roberto, did you want to add to that?
No, we're basically replacing what's there. I think that might have been David making that comment, so we're not going to be adding any additional signs. Delvis, the landlord, says that we should be fine. The only thing he asks is for us to submit those drawings to the owners just for their sign-off on it, but everything should be pretty much the same.
We have a standard provision requiring that those signs are not offensive to the landlord. Other than that, we're only replacing existing signage, so I don't think there is any permitting issue.
Unless they're scared of our hand.
We can take this out because there's more important things about the lease. But the worst case is we just file them in that case. But the more important point of this is that we finally have all the signatures we've been waiting for, so the bulk of the work is there.
My only question.
I like being told to dance, David.
Alejandro's got a question. Go ahead, sir.
Just quickly, I saw the lease as being a two-year term. In this instance, I didn't see any language, and that's fine because it's a very standard in this instance for what it means for us to come to the table after two years or whether or not that would be necessary. Just want to make sure that there is at least a general understanding, or at least we feel like we have a general understanding of where we need to go in two years' time, or at least in a year's time, when we revisit whether or not we'll be in need to extend. And I say that just simply that, given the difficulties we've had with Brooklyn Rise, and not to say their fault, but given all the circumstances and given the real estate market being what it is, I just want to make sure we're in a place where we feel we can come back to the table in a year's time and discuss extending.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
So, a couple things. One point, in fact, it's actually a three-year.
A three-year, excuse me.
Yeah, so it is a three-year lease. The lease from the landlord to Friends, as well as this sublease from Friends to the school, are both three-year terms. There is an option to extend the governing lease, should we choose to exercise that, but I think you're pointing to the important issue here, which is that the school has some planning to do, and that's why we have been exploring other options, because the long-term upper campus and potentially middle-school campus is something that deserves to be figured out, and we, you know, we're very pleased to have this option. It really has worked out nicely, and will be, it's great that the space exists so close, but we know that that doesn't solve the entire problem if you talk about, imagine seven or 800 kids at some point.
I guess the point being that ultimately, I guess I missed it, that there is an option to extend, say, that provides some comfort.
Yeah, and you would not have seen that here. Yeah, just because there's these layers of leases, guys, I'm sorry, but what I sent was just between Friends and us, but we would execute, if we were to execute the option in the overriding lease, then I'm sure Friends would agree to continue this.
Sure.
Good.
Any other questions? Should we take a vote on this now?
Yeah, if somebody wanted to make a motion to authorize the school to enter into this sub-sublease, that would be great.
And then I will soon move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Well, our next item of new business is the annual budget for school year 2022-23. For that, and to walk up to that, I'm going to turn it over to our friend Bob Keough.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm just trying to pull up my screen.
How's it doing, Bob?
I am actually home in New Orleans today, so.
All right, well then, good afternoon to you, too.
All right, sorry I could not be there with y'all. The finance committee met last week with, just to kind of talk through our proposed fiscal year 23 operating budget. This is due to the state by August 1st as part of our annual report upload. So, fully intend on, this is a very similar format to the presentation I think you've seen over the past two years. So, just kind of talking through some of the assumptions and mechanics of the budget. So, on the enrollment side, this budget is built around a full enrollment of 420 students. I broke out the grades, the grade spans here, 96 in grades K.
You broke up, Bob.
We lost you, Bob.
I'm texting, and, yeah. As he was starting to say, 96 students in grades K through 2, and then some attrition in grades 3 and 4.
My apologies.
We're laughing because we're waiting to get the motion detector to turn our lights back on. You were just saying, you were just saying that our enrollment projection is 420 students.
Correct. So, we budgeted 96 kids per grade, grades K through 2, 91 in grade 3, and 41 in grade 4. For the sake of revenue planning, we assumed that we hit 98% of this enrollment target, which totals 412 kids, and this table just kind of provides a side-by-side comparison of what we budgeted last year and where we are currently, this 315 figure versus a budgeted enrollment of 412 next year. So, that's an addition of 97 kids overall and would be inclusive, would equal to like a 31% growth for the school. So, our revenue assumptions, again, just 420 kids, 98% of this, for the sake of planning for special education funding, we assumed that our full enrollment kind of mirrors what we have now as it relates to paid special education enrollment, so 1% of our student population in the 20% to 60% tier, and 8% in the greater-than-60% tier. Again, for each of these tiers, the 20 through 60 yields the school an additional about $10,390, and the students in the greater-than-60% tier yield the school an additional $19,000. The DOE and the state have approved an operating budget, which is inclusive of a 4.7% increase to the base per pupil funding, so that's moving from $16,844 to $17,633. Our goal here is to approve the 2223 operating budget, but we did provide kind of soft out-year projections as well, and for the sake of that planning, we conservatively forecasted revenue, per pupil revenue increases at 4, at 2.5%. Just for historically, over the last three years, we've seen increases of 4.5%, 4.5%, and 4.7%. And then we also assume continued rent assistance for all of our students, grades K through 5, and we've designed both our lease at the existing facility and the new facility to kind of maximize this rent assistance, so we're not leaving any revenue on the table there. This is the final year of our federal stimulus funding as well, so we've included about $730,000 between the two programs. CRRS A is also known as like SRT2, which was the second round of the Trump stimulus, and the ARP is the American Rescue Plan, which is the Biden stimulus, which was our bigger bucket. And then we also assume continued receipt of titles 1 through 4, and IDEA, which are administered through the city and the state, and continued E-rate funding as well. Other revenue, we're including 60K in after-care fees, which is pretty much in line with kind of how we anticipate ending this fiscal year, and then small amounts in both philanthropy. You know, Michael mentioned the Bloomberg Summer Boost Program, which will offset our summer school costs, so we are recognizing a net savings of about 25K there. And then additionally, the way our leases are structured, we, there's some cushion in there, which will allow for kind of a revenue transfer back from Friends of Leap, so we budgeted a small amount there. Just looking at some numbers side-by-side, just so you can see the change, obviously, the biggest movement here is related to the per pupil and special education per pupil growth, again, for additional grade span, an additional grade span and additional students, and then additional rent assistance as well to the tune of about $600,000, again, primarily offsetting the new lease costs for the new facility that Michael just mentioned. We do have some nominal gains on our federal revenue side. Again, this is related to serving an additional grade span. A bigger enrollment obviously means... Again, this is related to serving an additional grade span, a bigger enrollment obviously means, uh, leads to a higher allocation. Uh, and then contributions, uh, again, just nominal, uh, amounts budgeted here. And this other state funding is, uh, kind of like formula in-kind donations that we receive annually from the state. So year-over-year growth, our budgeted amount last year was just shy of nine-point-one million dollars. Fiscal year twenty-three, we are proposing a projected revenue amount of eleven-point-two-nine million. Uh, key drivers, just on the expense side, uh, obviously we have a new grade level. Uh, we're making new hires to kind of support that growth. Uh, and Michael mentioned the second facility lease, which obviously comes at a cost. Uh, facilities are ticking up about seven hundred K total, uh, between the new sublease and other operating costs. Uh, and again, we are maximizing the amount of revenue that we are receiving from the DOE to offset this second facility. Uh, and then on the staffing side, again, to accommodate growth of, uh, a new grade level, second location, uh, we're proposing adding nine positions over our current staffing levels, which we are holding in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and just on average for our returning staff, uh, the raises that we've proposed in the budget are, uh, ticking up of just a hair more than four percent. This is a snapshot of our kind of proposed staffing model for the twenty-three fiscal year. And again, I think, you know, Michael at the last board meeting has kind of mentioned like leveraging these associate teacher positions to allow for kind of two teachers in a classroom. Um, and you have to nineteen lead teachers, I think you can read the rest for yourself. There's no real material changes to the general administrative side. Um, but we did just want to highlight kind of average salaries for, um, some of these placeholder positions that we have, uh, in the budget on the instructional side. Uh, these are our key expense drivers. Um, we've kind of bucketed it out expenses, uh, by total and type. Um, so this eight-point-four million really is what we are projecting, uh, this year as far as our all-in expense figure. Uh, and then we did just want to highlight kind of by expense type, uh, either amounts that we are spending above what we're currently spending or where we might have savings. So, uh, staffing is our biggest lever, obviously. We're, uh, within raises and the new hires, we do anticipate, uh, salaries and benefits increasing about one-point-three million dollars over what we're spending this year. Uh, facility operations and maintenance again is, uh, our, our second biggest lever here, uh, just with the addition of the new facility. Forty thousand dollars less in professional services, uh, non-operating costs is looking at an increase of about seventy K. These are things like, uh, depreciation and interest. Um, and then program costs, uh, are ticking down a little bit. I think we had some one-time expenses related to the pandemic, uh, this year, so we, we, we did realize kind of some savings here. So, uh, all in, we're moving from an eight-point-four million dollar budget up to about ten-point-four, uh, million dollars. And then these pie charts are really just indicative on a percentage basis of how we're spending our money. Uh, so facility and operations are ticking up a few percentage points. Staffing is very much in line with how we've spent our money historically. Uh, and then we see some small savings again on operating and programming costs down here.
Bob, I, I didn't ask you this ahead of time, but I'm curious, if you could go back to those pie charts.
Yep.
Just how, how does that, how do we generally compare to your other clients and what you see around the charter sector?
Uh, in the charter space, and again, it can vary, a lot of our schools, um, they pay, the trade-off is right, Michael, that they might have some salary savings, but on the, they're paying a management fee into a C M O. So this number can fluctuate wildly, but for a standalone charter school, I think you're right in the ballpark, um, typically. Uh, for a STEM school, this number is going to be anywhere from fifty-five percent to sixty-five, sixty-six percent. Anything over two-thirds is kind of a little bit of a danger zone. Um, I would say yours runs a little bit high just because you have such a good deal on your first lease in your current building. Um, that even with the add-back for, um, everything that we did in the sublease, um, you're, you're positioned. So I mean, sixty-three percent is really in the sweet spot.
Bob, um, because I like asking questions that I know the answer to, but because the rest of the board probably doesn't know these answers. Uh, what are you projecting the, uh, P and L surplus to look like for fiscal twenty-two?
Good question. Uh, that is kind of right on this executive summary slide right here. Um, these are our current projections, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two, uh, which includes a net income of about two-hundred-and-ninety-seven K. Excluding depreciation, we're looking at about four hundred thousand dollars in surplus. The fiscal year twenty-three, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, of that two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, Bob, how many hundreds of thousands of federal stimulus money came in this year?
Uh, same amount that we are projecting next year, seven-hundred-and-fifty K.
Okay, so let's look at next year then instead, since it won't look as bad as this year. Next year, what are you projecting as the net revenue?
Next year, fiscal year twenty-four or fiscal year twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Fiscal year twenty-three, we're projecting eleven-point-two million in net revenue.
No, no, in, uh, I'm sorry, in, uh, in bottom line.
Oh, bottom, bottom line.
In, yeah, eight fifty-six, right? And you said seven-hundred-and-thirty-three of that is federal stimulus?
Correct.
So I just would like to, to, to explain to this board why we lost five hundred thousand dollars this year and why we should be celebrating, you know, making a hundred thousand next year, uh, and, and spending all this money. Now, I understand a lot of it, but I want them to understand it in more simple terms because you've hidden it behind a lot of other numbers, but that's what's happening on these charts.
Uh, good question, David. Um, let, I, I would say that, uh, let me go back a few slides. Uh, I, I would think that this is one key slide to kind of answer that question, David.
I agree.
Let's, let's talk like brass tacks enrollment, right? Like we mentioned an enrollment of four hundred and twenty kids. Our total staffing is about eighty-two people projected next year, right? That's a student-to-staff ratio of just over five. That is very, very low. Um, so I, I think we can look at some of these positions that we have layered in. You know, we have associate teachers, which allow for two teachers in every classroom. We've got four interventionists. These positions are specifically supplemented by that federal stimulus dollars because one of the school's goals is small group instruction to address things like learning loss. And, um, you can kind of close that gap with a lot of small group and one-on-one instruction, which is really the design of some of these positions. Um, and you know, we have like just back-of-the-envelope math, right? These four interventionists at an average salary of eighty thousand dollars plus a benefit load on top of that, which is twenty, twenty-five percent is four hundred grand right there. Uh, these are not necessarily positions that I think we would be carrying absent of the stimulus, um, dollars that we're receiving, but spending that money on a super aggressive staffing model. So we have five adults in the building or five kids in the building for every adult is very, very generous. So I think, um, you know, staffing jumps to the front of my mind as far as areas where we have spent because we know we have the resources there in the interim with this funding to kind of meet the needs of students directly.
Okay, so since I like the answer, I'm going to keep going with this line of questioning for a second, Bob. And does that mean that you, we, we can structure this same kind of staffing model into the future without losing the kinds of money that I just described?
Yes, so, you know, I, we have, uh, schools in growth traditionally start hitting their sweet spot as far as budget surpluses go, once they hit years four, years five and beyond. A big problem that is facing a lot of charter school boards like yourself or schools that have, that are not in growth, uh, that have reached kind of a staffing model that is not necessarily sustainable because they had these barrels of stimulus funding on hand. Um, going kind of to our last slide in this presentation, just bottom-line figures that we're looking at, right? Um, for this, a lot of schools that we work with and traditionally the sense in the New York City charter landscape is, um, you have elementary schools that generate significant surplus, K through five or K through six. And those surpluses subsidize middle school and high school growth because the cost of educating a middle schooler is incrementally more expensive than, than a, an elementary school student. And the cost of educating a high schooler is much more expensive than an elementary school student. So these out-year surpluses that we start to see here are indicative of a school at capacity that is not as, not, you know, things can change, this is five or six years in the future, but you know, these sub, uh, these surpluses here are absent of federal funding. It allows for us to maintain the level of staffing that we have been keeping. And if we are, have no designs on running a high school, financing a high school facility, things like that, then yes, these surplus projections that we have in place allow us to maintain our staffing model as it sits kind of in perpetuity.
Great, and so this may not be for you, but my last sort of question on this line. And Bob, thank you for doing all of that so that I didn't have to, uh, some other time, but I appreciate it. Um, it is maybe for you and Michael, but that is, look, uh, through this discussion, you've just explained to me that we've netted close to a million dollars by the end of this June. Eight fifty this year, a hundred and fifty last year. We're looking at another seven figures in the, in the coming year. Um, how do we invest that back into, uh, the learning experience for these children in this school? And what's our plan to make sure that we're putting that money to work and not just saying, hey, um, we have a great opportunity to look at a nice bottom line? Um, and I know that you don't usually hear that kind of question from me, but I'm, I'm curious to know.
Well, I think it's two sides of the same coin. So what we've essentially done is pull forward some of the staff expansion that we would be seeing in the next couple of years into this year. So that instead of only having associate teachers in kindergarten as we have, we'll have them in several different grades next year. That'll help us keep catching up kids to grade level. It'll help us develop our staffing pipeline so that those same associate teachers can be trained to become these teachers into the future. Um, as far as the long-term goes, you take away federal funding, uh, to that level, um, and you think about what's a sustainable staffing model for us, I think Bob's point is correct. The more kids you add at the elementary level against a relatively similar overhead, uh, the more you have to, to, to spend on teachers. Um, but I also think that, you know, we are going to have to figure out what that sustainable model is. You know, uh, we have the luxury of having some great leaders who come from big C M Os, where there's outside fundraising even beyond, you know, the government funding that comes. And so it's, uh, familiar to them to think about, well, what if we have co-teaching in every classroom forever? And we're going to have to figure out how we square that circle, right? How do we, how do we make sure that we have a really robust staffing model, but also that we're not planning on fundraising that we can't do and that we really just, uh, keep it even? But even within the process of this budget, and I know you know this, David, but for the sake of the board, we have been iterating. Our first draft of the budget was literally co-teaching in every single classroom. We backed off on that a little bit, uh, but still I think we're excited about the prospect of having some more supports, uh, for next year.
Anyone else feel like putting Bob through the ring?
Bob, I think you should take advantage of pause in our conversation. If you had more of this, you wanted to walk us through.
I would gladly, I will happily plow through these last three slides. Um, just, just want to keep the board mindful of kind of opportunities and risks as it relates to this budget. I realize it's the end of May, some things may change as we move through, um, kind of fiscal year twenty-three. Um, there's always the opportunity for supplemental federal funding somewhere down the road. Um, for instance, in this year, the state continues to receive, uh, like twenty million dollars a year specifically for new charter schools in the state of New York. They had no way of allocating that money in New York City this year because of the charter cap. So they had to get very creative in ways that they've distributed this money in the last year or two. They've got an ability to offer this for things like grade level expansion or, uh, they allocated it pro rata across the entire charter space in the middle of COVID for, to offset some like technology and testing costs. So, um, they continue to receive this money, the charter cap's still in place, so there is a possible opportunity there. With our additional investment in, uh, like co-teaching and, uh, you know, small group learning, you know, I think we were very conservative in our special education estimates. Again, uh, it, special education kids do come at a cost to educate, but there are additional dollars out there. Uh, once we get, uh, their I E Ps aligned and approved at the department. Um, and then, you know, we included a very nominal amount of fundraising, um, in the budget. So there's always opportunities there for one-off grants and things like that, uh, through the work that both Michael and Roberto are doing. Uh, the biggest risk factor, obviously, uh, uh, across the state and, you know, Michael was kind of touched on enrollment and conversion of enrollment. Um, just as the school continues to grow, population changes, backfilling grades does become more difficult as a result of the pandemic. The, you know, there's enrollment waiting lists being tapped out. You always have families that complete paperwork, you expect them to be there the first day and then they aren't. Um, so with the shifting population dynamics in the city, I think this is a, a key concern across every charter school operator, um, throughout the five boroughs. Just being mindful of that and just wanted to call it out. Uh, so this is just, again, uh, an executive summary for all of you to kind of look at everything side-by-side with how we anticipate running this year and where we expect, expect to be next year. All in, you know, we're talking, projecting eleven-point-two million dollars in revenue against ten-point-four million dollars in total expenses. Um, I know our budgets have been a little bit tight through the first few years, but this is again, kind of one of those years where we kind of start to hit our stride and realize seven-figure surpluses and get us to that sustainability point going forward. So we are looking at projected net income of eight-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and excluding kind of non-cashed depreciation items, um, this is going to yield us kind of our first seven-figure surplus. Uh, just to give us a sense on cash flow, um, you know, we're, we're projecting about two-hundred thousand dollars in expenses on the cash side, which includes, you know, investments for things like furniture for a new grade, furniture for a second building, some technology replacements, things like that. Um, so I think we're mindful in how we did our classroom planning to get back to this capital number, uh, to accommodate, uh, the second facility and grade level growth. Uh, and then the sixty-five thousand dollar cash dispersment is just a security deposit that we are owed, uh, we owe to a second landlord. So this is kind of our bottom-line number. Um, and then this is a snapshot just for year-over-year growth, just to give you a sense of where we hope to be in five years. So, um, again, this net surplus really starts ramping up. When you are at capacity and generating these multiple seven-figure surpluses, this is where a lot of other schools in the city, you know, and David brought up a good point. What do you do with this equity? How do you invest it back into the school if it's not via staffing? You know, this is when schools kind of start getting serious about like, and I know New York City's tough right now, but like replication, expansion, opening a middle school, buying a new facility, um, things like that because you have the cash flow to kind of assume some of those costs and, and really get after it. But, uh, this is just kind of our soft five-year projection after fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, and then this is just the same information, but on a consolidated basis with kind of those rolling cash figures. Um, so we again, really start to start building up some equity here, uh, and can be kind of thoughtful when planning once we hopefully get to the back end of this pandemic and, uh, figure out what the next steps are.
Thank you, Bob. I know there's a lot of details in here and, uh, the finance committee has had a little more time with this than other members of the board, but love to talk through any questions anybody has. the finance committee has had a little more time with this than other members of the board, but love to talk through any questions anybody has. Right. We spoke with the academic committee about the staffing model portion of this. And one piece of it is adding some capacity in social work. We have a wonderful social worker who's staying with us, but she's very busy. And so we want to add some help there. And I want to shout out our board member who's on our calendar to come in and visit with our team, Magdalena, our one of our founding board members. So she'll she'll join the club of trustees who've come and spent a day at LEAP and that invitation is still open to everybody, but we wanted to get her advice about how we best think about that position. So I think maybe it's a last call for questions on the budget.
Yeah, thank you. Nobody else has questions. Thank you, David, for bringing up all of those. That's very helpful to get more into it. Should we move to vote?
I have one question. The salaries, who approves the salaries and is it an average?
So you see in the in the budget model, the detailed salaries that we project. I approve the salaries for all the staff except for Roberto and myself and you as the board approve those too. So what we, the figures that you see in the details here reflect year-end conversations with different staff members and basically we go based on combination of performance, experience and education and, you know, time, time in the school. So all those three things together lead us to to make offers to folks. And as Bob said, you know, you saw the percentage, but that is an average. Sometimes people are, you know, a teacher will have acquired a master's degree or will be getting a promotion or something like that. So it's not just a strip across the board.
In a second facility, right? So there's there's some efficiencies because you have administration out of a single location, but then there's some staffing needs because enough adult headcount, you know, in a building with a certain number of people. So is that a wash? I mean, how does it like say, say, say this space was magically larger versus being into even very close separate physical facilities? What effect is that having on the total personnel?
So that's a great question. I don't, I don't know of any headcount that we have in this budget only because of the separate facility. Now, that's not to say the facility doesn't add costs. So we're paying more per square foot for that facility than we do here. And there are operating costs that become less efficient. Like, for example, if we magically had another floor here, I wouldn't add another security guard out front, but because we'll be across the street, we'll have two security guards, right? So it does drive some of those related costs, but in terms of the core staff model, there are enough classrooms over there that we can divide our operations team to support it. Our leaders can be across both places. So we don't really have too many trade-offs there. It's more about getting the, over time, we'd like to get the facility cost per square foot closer to what we have here.
Yeah, I know it sounds negative when I was walking through all of that, but I just wanted to make sure we went through a lot of the issues that arose in in the prior meetings and that we we sort of aired them because I think a lot of positives came out of that and we learned a lot about how to really develop this. So like, even though I sound, however I sound when I ask questions, I was really trying to positive, to highlight the positive aspects of what had come out of that.
Sounds critical in a good way.
The other criticism that you will hear in the headlines is schools have received X billion dollars in aid and they're not spending it, you know? So we also don't want to be sitting on it for its own sake while still being responsible for our surpluses.
And these are the sandwiches they buy us.
Not at last, right?
With these millions of dollars. Is there a camera on me? I hope not.
There's one related question from a parent. It's my discretion to answer that very quickly. How decisions will be made for which classes have associate teachers? So that's a great question. We have, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll continue to have integrated co-teaching classes in every grade level and those always have to lead teachers, one general ed and one special ed. And then we'll be dividing up the the other associate teachers. We'll continue to have one-to-one in kindergarten and also first grade and fourth grade. But in second and third grade, we just made the determination that some associate teachers could be shared across classrooms. And that just had to do with the personnel that we had and and just kind of the developmental arc for kids. So in terms of assignment of students to those classes, I mean, that's the the regular, the regular process. But it's not as if your child might be in a class that only has one teacher ever. It's just a question of will they have an associate teacher who's always there or one who's shared? But there's, there's going to be more than one teacher supporting every classroom. So I hope that answers your question there. Okay.
Yes, would someone like to put a motion to vote unless there are any other questions? For the budget. Can I make a motion?
You may.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. Make a motion to approve the budget. All in favor?
Aye. Magdalena seconds. Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, and especially to our treasurer and the finance committee and Bob and his team. It's several months in the making. All right.
Is that the question you answered, the little one?
Yes. So the finance committee, in light of this focus on the annual budget, we have, we have not focused on anything else. And as a matter of fact, Bob's going to be circulating the April financials to the committee members with our apologies. We all got very caught up in the in the annual budgeting process. But we don't anticipate really any deviations from from the trends of the last few months. We're fine in terms of cash flow.
Good.
So David, I don't know if you'd like to add anything else in terms of the finance committee?
Oh, I did what I wanted.
I suppose you represent the executive committee?
Yes, the executive committee met, as we have been meeting monthly. And we discussed a few issues regarding sure how much of that, we'll be going into executive matters. We discussed executive matters in the executive session and executive committee. And we will be going into executive session today to discuss some of that.
Uh, yeah, which are largely personal and compensation matters. So to fall within our purview of that. Yeah. And then I guess Mahal got that.
Yes, academic and accountability committee, we met and that feels a little bit like our way compared to everything else. Sorry, I don't have my notes here, but I mean, I'm blanking out.
If I recall, we we went through a couple of things we've just described today. We talked about the SED visit.
Yes.
And then also the staffing model within the budget.
Right. Yes, we went into into some of the details that you mentioned. I'm not sure I understood correctly regarding the associate teacher shared in second and third grade. You had also mentioned that, if I understood it correctly, that when it's shared, it's one teacher, it's shared between a couple of classrooms. So that there's consistency. It's not just floating associates, but they they get to know and that will, that will make it easier to work on small groups and all that sort of thing. But it's not quite like having the associate teacher permanently in the classroom, but it's a, the teacher will be regularly there and know the children.
Yes.
Or the students that learn her.
So in second and third grade, one associate teacher is shared amongst two geni classes on that grade.
Only two?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, that's something that we discussed with the center in terms of like more details and.
So will she be in the mornings in one class and in the afternoon is a different class or is she?
It is. I mean, everything's going to be driven by data. So depending on where the kids are, what the need is, then if it makes sense for her, it could be that she's two blocks in one geni class in the morning and then two blocks in the other class in the morning. You know, it could, it could, that could vary. You know, I mean, we're going to have like data from the end of the year to look at in the summer and that's going to drive that decision-making. Also, there's the SEL support. So there's an associate teacher that may be the one that a student needs at a certain time of the day, then we have to meet that need as well. So I think it all, you know, like I said, will will be driven by what the kids need.
One other topic we touched on the academic committee was also just the importance of of language. Not just obviously throughout our school, but in in terms of assigning teachers to classes. You know, we have to make sure that teachers are are learning their their sounds and their and their phonemes correctly in both languages. And if that means being strategic with which teachers are teaching which subjects, then then we do that. Because the last thing you want to do is make mistakes in the in the letter sounds when you're learning a new language and then have to undo that later. All right. Thank you very much. I don't know if there are board development or other board items this month.
I don't think we have any any board. And we're, we're, we've been discussing, one of the people discussing the executive session is the need to have a retreat for the board members and to, you know, some development and some, and we need to discuss some more topics and that. But we haven't, we haven't set a date. We'll probably something else we'll discuss in the executive session. We'd like to set a date soon-ish, at least to know when this will be happening and start that organization. But that's it in terms of board boredom and development at the moment.
Very good.
Oh, yes. And yes, we need.
So I think we're required to do both the retreat and the self-assessment within the within a certain period of time and it's just coming up on us.
Very good. All right. Well, our next agenda item is public comments as we're moving right along. So I, as is my want, I will go in alphabetical order according to my screen. So Alma Woods, Ms. Woods, would you care to say anything tonight?
No comment tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Can you fix that? That's sloppy.
Ms. Rosado Buckley, nice to see your name. Would you like to care? Would you care to comment tonight?
Hello, I do want to, I guess I did have some comments. I like that you guys mentioned about the spelling bee and the math, I guess, tournament. I didn't know you guys did that. I think it's a great way to like motivate the kids. And I guess all the teachers will be sharing more information about that. That's what I just wanted to know. And my other question is about the other location. What grades are you guys thinking about putting in that building?
Well, in terms of the location, we are going to be putting third and fourth grade over there and we we'll be sending out some some more information, but the the thing to know is that the academic experience will be will be unchanged, same specials, same meals, same social, emotional learning, same recess. After-school will be here in our main building, but grades three and four, we plan to have across the street, sort of a big kids campus, if you will. And then as to your question about teachers, so teachers will be communicating about the math contest? Yeah. So look for communication from teachers on that, Daisy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arbor Weintraub, good evening. Would you like to say anything tonight?
Nope, I don't have anything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay. And I will not call on our loner laptops in the room because I've learned my lesson. And that concludes public comment for tonight. So thank you all for being there. Melanie?
Speech therapist. Do we know anything? We're gonna be getting a speech therapist soon. Also, parents could now understand speech therapists, at least let us know for kids. My son's like, mommy, I miss my speech therapist. I haven't seen her since X amount of time. So if we could get informed.
Absolutely. We have been working desperately with the CSE to acquire someone. Although we have not located someone for this school year, but we are still searching. I did receive an email today indicating that City Sounds will be able to take on both our Spanish and English case loads for the twenty twenty-three school year.
I know it's hard and I know it's New York and we're under.
Yeah. And just so everybody's not overly alarmed, we do provide speech therapy and we have every year. We've been dealing with the staffing gap on the city provided agency side for some weeks now. So we will continue to work on that. Okay.
Michael?
Roberto?
Have my hand up, you can see.
I didn't, I didn't have all the screen open. I apologize.
No worries, no worries. I just wanted to tell the board that I'm sorry. I'm not there today to be joining with you. I'm just coming out of COVID. And I thought it'd be the better course of wisdom to stay away. But for the most part, you know, I'm only met there. But what I wanted to call out and do a shout out to our board member, David Estrada. David introduced us to the executive director, Griselle Amador of the United Senior Center of Sunset Park. And it was a lovely visit and a lovely meeting, just really got a good sense. The senior center is the neighbor to our new school annex. And they've been there for, gosh, maybe twenty years and and just a stalwart citizen, somebody who's going to be a good partner for us. And then she on her own with her colleagues came over to the school and met with Michael and the team. So David, just wanted to say thank you for making that relationship happen.
Yeah, we were, we were pleased to give them a tour and we'll look forward to getting to know them. Good. Thank you, Roberto. Okay, so I believe the board plans to go into executive session, right?
That will lead to adjourned to executive session.
Okay.
With the purpose to discuss matters related to the employment history of a particular person or related to employment. What? So I think.
Yeah, Dave, these are largely employment matters.
Yes, largely employment matters.
So David, so moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to ask you guys a question before. I have to ask you guys a question before.
We adjourn.
We are back online.
All right.
Well, so that continuous Zoom running, recording in the background?
Yeah.
In the other room.
But no, not here.
I know, I know. That's some sad dead air for anyone who wants to watch it in the future.
Exactly. So, we've discussed and now we're back. Move to adjourn.
Having settled our personnel matters, I will move to adjourn this meeting.
Second and unanimous, can I look around?
Yes.
Yes.
High standing acclamation.